Good evening, everyone. We are reconvening the Monday, August 22, 2022, meeting to order. Chris, would you like to lead the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in its scope, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a special presentation this evening. And at this time, I would like to invite the Dublin Select Diamondbacks to come forward along with their coach, Gary Kirk. We are recognizing, if you would just come forward, stand right up here, facing the audience. We are recognizing the Dublin Select Diamondbacks, 16 U softball teams, 2022 USSA Eastern National Championship. The Diamondbacks finished the tournament in Loudoun County, Virginia, with a 7-1 record, defeating the Midwest Marlins to secure a national championship. On behalf of Dublin City Council and the city of Dublin, I would like to congratulate the team members and their coach, Gary Kirk, for being outstanding representatives of our community. That's quite an accomplishment. That's amazing. That's an amazing accomplishment. I bet there's a story to tell. Would you like to say something? All right, Gary.
Definitely needed to have notes written out because I wouldn't be able to get through it otherwise. But Mayor Fox, esteemed city council members, thank you for bestowing this honor to the Dublin Select Diamondbacks 16 U softball team. Before I get to the team, I would like to thank the people who helped make tonight possible. First of all, I'd like to thank the parents, grandparents, family and friends that have supported the Diamondback team throughout the years we have been together. Their dedication and encouragement, without any of the drama, really allowed the team to put their best effort out on the field, especially when we had our little sister cheerleaders rooting us on from behind the dugout. I also want to thank my fellow Dublin Select softball coaches, especially Josh Hicks, who not only coaches but also serves as the DSS director. Each year, we strive to create a program that further develops players to allow them success on and off the field. This is due in no small part to Josh's behind-the-scenes hard work and efforts. Dublin Select softball is a program dedicated to advancing the skills, knowledge and confidence of softball players in the Dublin community. Together, we have seven teams for the 2023 season and more than 80 players ranging from nine to 17 years old participating. It truly is one big family. Finally, I want to thank the Diamondback players. Hannah Scornica, Faith Kinzer, Dylan Haynes, Mia Kirk, Ally Inch, Riley Shaner, Ani Spagnolo, Emma Cook, Grace Williams, Ella Crumpack, Rachel Thompson and Lizzie Foreman. Because of injuries, we went into Nationals with only nine players on our roster, with only two pitchers and one catcher, and many, many players having to play out of position. But they all rallied together and collectively played their best softball of the year, as Mayor Fox mentioned, going 7-1 during the tournament and winning the championship. But I'm just as proud of them for their actions off the field. They have always shown great sportsmanship, win or lose, and they have been outstanding mentors and role models for the younger girls as they have set the example for the other Dublin Select teams to follow. We are proud to put Dublin, Ohio on the map in the most positive way with these exceptional female athletes that competed out of state and won the USSA Eastern National Championship in Virginia. They are the best daughters, sisters, friends, teammates and players that I've ever coached, and they will always be my girls. So on behalf of the parents, coaches, and most especially the players, thank you to the city council for your continued support of the Dublin Select softball program. Thank you.
What a nice comment. It's obvious that you're not only all-star athletes, but you're an all-star family and very loyal to each other. And I have a feeling that you'll be remembering this day and this year for a very long time, and you've made some great friendships. So congratulations. We here at city council have a letter of recognition for you each. This certificate of recognition is presented to the Dublin Select Diamondbacks 16 U softball team. On behalf of the Dublin City Council and the city of Dublin, we hereby recognize and congratulate the team members and their coach, Gary Kirk, for being outstanding representatives and bringing a great pride to our community. So congratulations, all of you. There you are. All right. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is citizens' comments. And this is an opportunity for citizens to comment on any topic that is not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone present who wishes to make a comment? Or have there been any comments received online?
Nothing online, Mayor.
Thank you. On the consent agenda next, is there a request to remove any item from the current consent agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Jenny, please call the roll.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes. If you wouldn't mind, I'd just like to take a minute and thank our... As fun as these city council meetings are, if you don't want to stay for the duration of it, you'd be welcome to leave. It is a beautiful evening, and we would love to have you stay. But if you feel compelled to leave, that's a good time for that, too.
Good advice. This evening, there are no second readings of our ordinance. Introduction and first reading, public hearing ordinance 30-22.
Adopting a 2023 through 2027 five-year capital improvements program.
I'll introduce it.
May I have an introduction?
I just introduced it.
Sorry, I didn't hear you. Our staff report this evening is Finance Director, Matt Stifler.
Good evening, members of council. Tonight, we continue our 2023 through 2027 CIP program with the first hearing of ordinance 30-22, that CIP. Our schedule, we are on schedule, today being the 22nd, and we are having the first hearing of the ordinance. We will continue the CIP on September 26th at our second workshop, which will precede that evening's council meeting, and we will pass a CIP ordinance either at the 26th, if there aren't significant changes, or later in November, if that's necessary. Regarding resources for the 2023 through 2027 CIP, we have identified resources that were addressed at a prior council meeting totaling $227.7 million, the details of which are in the graphic on the left there, but are also contained in Board Pack. And in terms of projects, this CIP has 154 capital projects totaling $221.4 million. We are continuing our emphasis on maintenance of the city's current assets. Once again, having maintenance over $80 million in this five-year CIP totals $80.7 million. And we are continuing to increase the infrastructure in our community, programming $140.7 million in new infrastructure in the next five years. As the two graphics show, a majority of these assets will be in transportation, whether that's streets and parking, bridges and culverts, or mobility, representing about 50% to 60% of both maintenance and new projects. And with that, we will continue our discussion of the CIP on the 26th, and I'm available for any questions here tonight.
Matt, I noticed that what was in Board Pack was substitibly similar to what we had seen before with the resolution added. And I just wanted to make sure that there were comments at our workshop relative to, excuse me, the bike charging stations and what that might look like if those were a proprietary kind of item, or if they would be user-specific or if they would be user-neutral. And then there was also some conversation about putting placeholder monies in the out-years for possible park improvements at Dari Fields. So when we have our next conversation relative to the CIP, will those items be addressed?
Yes, we created a list of items, discussion items, that were part of that first workshop, and we will either respond to those in memo form, if they were relatively small, straightforward responses, or I think in particular, your conversation about maybe out-year debt projects, and that will be part of a presentation and conversation that we'll have at that second workshop.
Great, thank you.
I had one additional thing. I just want to make sure then, as you're preparing. I know I had on my list the stream, the waterway maintenance, the erosion stuff, trying to figure out if we could pull some money from somewhere and front-load that and just buy two cents of possibly places to pull money. So maybe those are projects that we would want more information on would be the the Tucson Mill landscaping, the entry signs/park signs project, and the South High, the Chamber Park. Those are three of, in my opinion, that at least have more information available, maybe to move money around.
Absolutely. Yeah, we have the request for the stormwater to do the accelerated instead of the more uniform. I think one of the benefits, perhaps, of waiting until September 26th to address this again is we get eight more weeks of income tax returns. I'm hoping that the problem will solve itself because August will be a great month. But it's still a little murky and cloudy on that result about halfway through it. So hopefully, the second half really picks up. That would allow us to increase those expenditures relatively easily. Otherwise, the CIP is pretty well-funded, and we may have to make some trade-off decisions if we're not able to identify additional revenue opportunities between now and the 26th. But the projects you identified are certainly a resource that we could talk about at that work session, and we'll have a list available to have those conversations at that time.
And sorry, I apologize. I had one more. I forgot my notes at home. We had asked for some little more information on the Cota bus stops, too, and the user ship, and some information on that project, too.
Absolutely. I think my intention is to get the memo kind of responding to that first workshop at the ordinance's second hearing in two weeks, which is still two weeks ahead of the second work session. So you'll have an opportunity to read it, respond to our responses, which still gives us time to prepare another response that we could have at that work session on the 26th. And if there are other thoughts that have come up or something that, you know, after the workshop, you're like, oh, I wish I had thought of that one. I mean, just let us know. We'll cross those out, and we'll have to just talk through scenarios. So, you know, by all means, let us know.
Dana, to that end, I think one of the things that I hope we can have some time to have some dialogue on is in a rising inflationary environment and a rising interest rate environment, when we think about debt financing for not only 2023, but perhaps look at that window for 2024, 2025. Because in that environment, I think we've been operating in an environment where, in fact, it's almost been the opposite, right? A pretty level cost scenario and certainly a very low interest rate environment. But if we're going into that, I think it would behoove us, and I would appreciate, Matt, your thoughts and ideas on how we think about financing and funding in that environment, not just for '23 period, but maybe for... I know five years out is impossible. But if we could take some time to think about that, because when we talk about trade-offs and we talk about making our 2023 work, well, in an inflationary period, maybe some of those trade-offs look a little different. So if we could have some time to talk about that or frame that in some way, I would really appreciate that. Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. Is there any public comment on this?
None.
All right. Ordinance 31-22.
Establishing the creation of the One Ohio Opioid Relief Special Revenue Fund.
Our staff... Thank you. Our staff report is Matt Stifler again. Matt?
Good evening. Ordinance 31-22 creates a new special revenue fund, as is required by the Auditor of State in Ohio Revised Code. This special revenue fund will include deposits from monies that are received from settlement negotiations and litigation that the city is a party to with regards to drug manufacturers and distributors of opioids. We expect to receive payments from settlements over the next 18 years totaling approximately $200,000. In July, we received our first settlement of just over $8,000. These funds will be deposited into this fund and will be budgeted as part of the operating budget discussions that we have in the next two months.
All right. Public comment on this particular item? No? Counsel, any questions or discussions for Matt? None? Second reading and public hearing is scheduled for September 12, 2022. Ordinance 32-22.
Amending ordinance number 1496, passed April 1, 1996, as subsequently amended to supplement the public improvements to be made to benefit the property identified in that ordinance.
I'll introduce it.
Matt?
Thank you once again. This ordinance 32-22 modifies the Thomas Kohler TIF in order to be able to utilize the funds in that TIF for projects either in previously approved CIPs that have not been executed or programmed in our 2023 through 2027 CIP. The Thomas Kohler TIF has been modified... Well, actually, it was created in 1996 to do the three projects that are listed in those first three bullet points. It has been modified several times. The first modification was in 1999, turning it from a non-school TIF into a straight TIF, as was relatively common back in the early '90s TIFs. It was modified in '02 to include additional projects, including the underground relocation and burying of overhead cables, and was recently modified in 2014 to include those two projects listed, the widening of Avery Road and a roundabout at the intersection of Avery and Rings Road West. The current fund balance of the Thomas Kohler TIF fund is approximately $3.4 million, and it generates about $800,000 a year in service payment revenue. Modifying this TIF will allow us to use these service payment revenues for the Avery Road, the intersection of Avery and Cara Rings Road. This project was originally appropriated $2.5 million in 2021 in the 2021 CIP. It's proposed to be re-appropriated $3 million in the '23 CIP as that project has not yet begun. We are probably going to bring land acquisition appropriations forward in the Q3 supplemental so that that project will be able to start construction early in 2023. The other project that these modifications will support is the Avery Road Shared Use Path. It's in the '23 CIP proposed design of $235,023 and just over $1.2 million in '24. So we have sent the required notice to the Dublin City School District and the Toll's Career and Technical Center regarding these modifications, and we do recommend support for approval at the next hearing on September 12th.
Thank you. Any public comment on this? All right, counsel, do we have any questions? As Matt said, our second reading will be scheduled for September 12th. Ordinance 33-22.
To remove special assessments previously levied for certain public improvements in the city of Dublin, Ohio in cooperation with the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District.
I'll introduce it.
Our staff report this evening is our Economic Development Administrator, Kirby Durritt. Welcome, Kirby.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. On February 25, 2019, Dublin City Council passed ordinance 419 establishing pace financing assessments of $31,221,830 to the property owners of Bridge Park Block D. The scope of work included equipping the new building construction with LED lighting, high-efficiency HVAC systems, building automation controls, and high-efficiency roof, building windows and doors. Since the project received funding, the construction has been completed, and the property owner prepaid all amounts outstanding associated with the special assessment. Therefore, Dublin City Council will need to pass the legislation before you this evening, ordinance 33-22, removing the previously established special assessments on the property. As a reminder, city council similarly removed pace assessments on our property at the March 21 council meeting earlier this year. And again, the city has no financial obligations. With the establishment or removal of the Special Improvement District, we are simply serving as a pass-through entity. Staff is recommending approval of this legislation at your following meeting, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Kirby. Any public comment? Any questions for Kirby? None? All right. Second reading is scheduled for September 12th. Introduction of Resolution 41-22.
Appointing a new city manager and authorizing the execution of an employment agreement with the city manager.
I'll introduce it.
Our council report this evening is Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Thank you. In my capacity as Chair of the Administrative Committee, I am pleased this evening to bring forth a resolution for your consideration regarding the city manager position. As you recall, in the fall of 2020, city manager Dana McDaniel shared with council that he'd like to retire from his role as city manager after 33 years of distinguished service and outstanding leadership to the city of Dublin. Dublin has changed just a little bit since Mr. McDaniel joined the staff, but there is no doubt that we are a better community today because of Dana's service, his caring, vision, the many, many partnerships and award-winning programs that he's built, and the outstanding teams that he's managed and mentored. We thank you for your leadership, Dana. In December 2021, council launched the city manager selection process. After conducting interviews with leading public service executive recruiting firms, council entered into a contract with Affion Public to assist us in our work. Leadership from Affion conducted dozens of interviews and held mini-group meetings with a wide and inclusive set of community stakeholders. Those interviews include city staff and city staff leadership, resident leadership from our active homeowner and civic associations, leadership from many of our outstanding community partners, leaders from Dublin City School and Toll's Career and Technical Center, resident members of our community boards and commissions, executives from Dublin's business community, and city council leaders. Council was committed to ensuring that the views and the voices of our community were included in this important process, and I'd like to take this opportunity to thank our residents and our partners for their time and their support. Council's goal throughout this process has been very clear: listen to our community, hold true to our vision of being the global city of choice, and identify an outstanding leader who is skilled and prepared and committed to partnering with our amazing city staff, our residents, and our community partners to ensure that Dublin continues to be the very best community in the U.S. to live, work, play and learn. After an extensive national search, our executive search firm provided city council with a strong slate of qualified candidates. Council had the opportunity to conduct interviews with the finalists, and on August 2, council unanimously approved a motion initiating contract negotiations with Megan O'Callaghan for the position of Dublin City Manager. I'm pleased to report tonight that those contract negotiations have successfully resulted in the employment agreement that is before council for your consideration. O'Callaghan will assume the role of city manager on October 1, 2022. And in order to facilitate the transition, Dana McDaniel will continue his work in an advisory capacity until August 1, 2023. O'Callaghan has been serving the city of Dublin since 2014, when she was hired as the city's Public Service Director. Ms. O'Callaghan has led several city groups and divisions, and she currently serves as the Deputy City Manager, Chief Finance and Development Office, a position she has held since February 2021. Ms. O'Callaghan has an extensive professional, educational and community service resume. I'll not go over that resume in detail this evening, but it is available on the city's website. I'll just share that Ms. O'Callaghan brings to the city manager role an outstanding track record and proven commitment to building strong partnerships, cooperation and inclusion within Dublin, around the region and around the state. Ms. O'Callaghan has an unwavering commitment to resident service, and she's demonstrated her ability to lead innovative change and advancement while also ensuring stewardship of Dublin's natural and historic treasures. Therefore, colleagues, I am pleased to recommend approval of Resolution 41-22, appointing Megan O'Callaghan to the position of city manager and authorizing the execution of the employment agreement.
Thank you, Vice Mayor DeRosa. Are there any public comments before we ask Megan if she'd like to come to the podium? Well, we could. We can take the vote, but we weren't... Okay. Let's do that, then. We'll just take the vote. If we don't have any questions or comments, then Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
All right. Please come to the podium, Megan.
Good evening, and thank you, members of council. I'm honored that you have selected me to be your next city manager. Dublin is a world-class, vibrant and welcoming city known for safety, innovation, economic vitality and inclusion. We are recognized as a visionary community that advances big ideas and pioneers projects that enhance the quality of life and ensure our economic and environmental sustainability. I'm passionate about service. I'm passionate about service and providing best-in-class services for our very engaged residents. I'm proud that Dublin is the best city to live in, the best suburb to do business, and host the best community events, and the list goes on. These are the reasons that I love living in Dublin and am so excited to lead here in Dublin. All of these amenities are well-planned, neighborhoods, and impressive city services are because of our amazing employees. There's a culture of excellence in this city, and I look forward to continuing to foster that sense of pride our staff has in working here. I want to thank each and every employee that I've had the chance to work with during my tenure in Dublin, and that includes the talented executive staff that you see here tonight, and the hundreds of staff who work hard each and every day to bring excellence to Dublin each and every day. I'd also like to thank Dana for his leadership, his dedication to continuous improvement and professional development among the staff, and his all-in attitude. Thank you for your service, and I appreciate your mentorship, Dana. I've learned so much about local governments, home rule, strategic planning, preparedness, and resilience from working with you, and I'd also like to acknowledge the city managers who became who came before Dana and previous city councils, who all laid the groundwork for this place we're so proud to call home today. It's through their visionary thinking and strategic planning that we will continue to provide the best quality of life and environment for residents and businesses all to thrive. And finally, on a personal note, I'd like to thank my family. Growing up, my entire family was actively engaged in our community, and now I couldn't be prouder to carry on that tradition of public service and community involvement. Raising my daughter Melanie and my son Jack here in Dublin, we will all be familiar faces throughout the community, participating in Community Service Days, all our wonderful events, Irish dance performances, swim meets, soccer games, and so on. Members of council, I'd like to sincerely thank you for this opportunity and for having the trust and confidence in me to lead this great city. I look forward to working with you to execute your strategic framework and advance your visionary goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan.
Well, thank you for the chance. First of all, I'm very proud of council and their process. You know, the process that you did is a tribute to our form of government. You know, we have a council manager plan, and its true strength lies in its elected leaders and the vision that you provide, and it's also based on the experience, the training, the skills of a professional manager. And so I appreciate that you paid tribute and upheld the position. Your national search, I think, certainly paid tribute to that. Of course, I'm really proud that one of our own would make it through that process and become the next city manager, so very proud of Megan, and she's going to do a great job. She's done a lot to prepare herself for this and has worked really hard throughout her career, and couldn't be more proud to hand this off to her. I look forward to transitioning with her and do my best to help her out and stay out of the way at the same time. So we'll get through that. I also just want to say thanks to our employees, because they're doing a great job through this transition and just, you know, continuing to drive right on, and we will not miss a beat, I don't think, will we, Megan? So I think it'll go great, so. Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to serve you as well. Appreciate it. More to be said later. Thank you.
This is, I know that there is an opportunity here. We all would love to say at least our congratulations, so I'll open it up to my fellow councilman.
We're just going to go down the line. Excellent. Good choice. Megan, congratulations. Very excited to work with you. We've got a lot going on, but don't worry, we're in this together.
Thank you for your willingness to serve. It is a tremendous sacrifice, and I think it's much appreciated by this community that we would have someone willing to make the sacrifice that it takes to lead this community. It's a 24/7/365 job, and welcome to it.
I've said a lot already, haven't I, Megan? But I congratulate you. I mean, every time I go over the background and the skills and the preparation that you have worked so hard to do, we're honored and thrilled to have you. And I'd say the biggest compliment is I see all the smiles of all your colleagues who are going to get to work with you tonight, and all the smiles up here in appreciation and excitement to partner with you to move forward. So congratulations and thank you.
We, the city, and the residents are in great hands with your leadership. I just want to thank you for taking on this important task. It's a huge set of shoes to fill, and you're the qualified person that can do that probably better than anybody else, so thank you.
Dana's motto was "All in, all the time," and I know I put you on the spot a few weeks back when I asked you what your motto was going to be. I think you answered that tonight: culture of excellence. So we're excited to hand the torch to you and excited to see what you're going to do.
And it's all been said already, so I would just say thank you and good luck. I know you've got it handled. Thanks.
And I know for myself, and I'm sure we all feel this way, we're so excited to begin this new chapter with you and work together to continue the work that we've been doing in the past and moving forward. It's an exciting time for all of us, and I'm sure that it feels like a brand-new, overwhelming door to walk through, but know that you have all of us and all those smiling faces behind you to help you through it. So congratulations. Now we'll move on to staff comments, process improvement and innovation update.
Well, I guess, speaking of excellence, I just wanted to lift up the fact that we have recently had some of our staff members certified, become certified black belts, and I just wanted to lift up the, you know, the fact that we, and I appreciate Brandon Brown preparing the memo. He's our Director of Performance Analytics, and that we had implemented lean ASQ Six Sigma methodologies a few years ago. And it's pretty amazing, really, when you think about all that goes into it, and the number of black belts that we've generated. I've counted 21 total. Some of those have left the city and gone on it. Maybe a little high in number, but I think that's about right. And for a city our size, organization our size, that's a lot of black belts, and we also have 56 yellow belts and 10 green belts. So I hope that the memo lifted up that system, the fact we have a lot of facilitators and so forth. But I want to make sure that I'm recognizing Kendall Blake. Kendall, you're here tonight, so you can stand up. Kirby Durth. Megan Murray is not here. I didn't ask her to be here, but if you get a chance to reach out to Megan Murray, a financial analyst. Jeannie Willis, our Director of Mobility, all were just recently certified as black belts. We have one more employee to test yet in September. I'm sure she'll do just fine, but we don't mention that because it's bad luck if we do that, so we'll stay away from that. But, you know, in summary, to have this process, your support of the development of our employees that way is just significant. So I just wanted to lift them up and congratulate them. It's just, it's an incredible effort. As Kirby or Kendall, anyone will remind you, when they were going through their testing, it was a four-hour test or something like that you go through to do it, and I couldn't do it, but I'm glad that they can, so I'm really proud of them. So I wanted to lift that up tonight, and again, congratulations to council, congratulations to Megan, and that's all I have unless you have any questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is council reports, and we have an update on a meeting that we had with Craig Barnum from Two Chiefs, and I think Councilmember Keeler will be reporting on that.
Thank you, Mayor Fox. So on August 9th, Mayor Fox, myself, Dana, and Jenny Roush met with Craig Barnum and his architect, Mike Lusk. He was gracious enough to share some of his insights into the process that he's gone through in trying to make his temporary patio enclosure permanent. He shared some of the challenges and opportunities that the site and the historic district itself has within the block that his business sits, and we more or less were listening with attention and, again, grateful to have him sharing his experiences. We always want to get better, so we're looking at ways that we can improve the process. We agreed to investigate a number of the concerns that he brought, our ideas, thoughts, challenges, even opportunities that he brought to our attention within his area to see if we can make those work. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, any questions for Councilman Keeler? All right, here none. Next is our council liaison report. Councilman Aludo is reporting on Dublin Board of Education.
Thanks, Jane. So Jade and I had a chance to meet with the Board of Education, and Dana was present. We had a pretty lengthy conversation about health and safety relative to students, teachers, and staff, and some possible training, you know, for safety and safety concerns. Certainly, we talked about mental health. I think that's a topic that tends to come up every time we meet, and how we might be able to do some partnering on potential training in the future. At a high level, that's where we ended it. If you wanted to add anything?
Great, thank you.
Thank you. I think I skipped over our council committee report on Public Services Committee. Councilman Cram?
So at our last meeting, we had two agenda items. One was the Stormwater Basin Maintenance Grant Program that we started. We actually had one applicant, and we are going to be bringing forth, I think at our next council meeting, we're recommending the approval of the applicant. It's Tartan Ridge Homeowners Association. They asked for the maximum $10,000, which we were going to give, and they would be completing the rest, which was a little over $21,000, so they're going to cover 2/3 of the price. There were some questions of why we only had one applicant, and I think there was multiple factors, one being that there's a matching requirement, and the HOAs have to plan for that and get that money. So that was one big thing. So now that they know the grant program exists, I think that will be a component that they can plan for. So the other item was the golf course of Dublin and the issues with revising one of the holes and helping facilitate some conversations between the course owners and residents. That actually is going to be a continued conversation, and we will continue it again. It looks like now it's going to move to our October meeting, because that's when the expert, the golf course designer, is going to be available. So that's it.
Thank you. U.S. 33 Corridor Group, Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yep. So we met last Friday. There are a number of projects in the region that are nearing completion. Probably the one most noteworthy, or the ones most noteworthy, are the Jerome Township Water Tower and the water treatment facility. Those are coming online, supposed to be coming online by Labor Day. Also, the large development at Plain City, 1,200 units off of Route 161. About half of those units are unsold, pending water and sewer. So I'm assuming that once this water and sewer comes online, they can sell the rest of those units. Thank goodness, those are Jonathan Alder School District, not Dublin. The 161 route through that development will reopen Labor Day as well. And this Thursday, August 25th, at the Avalon, I'd hope all of you could join us at the Business Impact Breakfast. It's a joint meeting of chambers throughout the region. Also, give us a way to peer into that Avalon Theater and take a look for ourselves. Thank you.
Do you have for the next, Logan Union Champagne County Regional? Anything?
Nothing to report.
All right. Mr. Reiner, Dublin Arts Council and Veterans Committee.
Yeah, we're going to continue with the Sundays at the Sciota, and let's see, the next real feature, I think, is the Little Mermen, and it's sort of a Disney classic for all ages. That's going to be September 4th at 6:30. Should be a nice family affair. And then, of course, one of the favorites, the British Invasion's going to be here September 25th. See you at the park.
I have a nice comment for you, and that at the Dublin Irish Festival, the veterans' tent was such a high success, and they accommodated so many people, and they wanted to make sure that you knew that, so.
Oh, great.
I meant to tell you that earlier. All right. Washington Township, report from Ms. Cram?
Yeah, I attended the meeting last week, and, you know, it was, the only request they had was to be part of the Parks Master Plan and give their opinion on some things, and Mr. Riggs already put them in touch with each other, so they will talk to the consultant, because they had not been contacted about the master plan. And the one very, I guess, heartfelt thing at that is there was a gentleman in his family who came to thank the fire department for saving his life in July. He had been out running and had a heart attack by the North Pool, and they were able to save his life, and he was there with his little kids, and very young men, and his family, so that was, that was very nice. That was it.
Thank you. Councilman Grooms, do you have some, a report?
August 11th was our committee meeting for MOPC, and I trust that you all had an opportunity to read those meeting minutes that were distributed. I would just like to mention that on the 26th, there'll be a candidates forum that will be held downtown Columbus that will have both the candidates for governor for the state of Ohio that will come and present. So looking forward to seeing their thoughts on leadership and moving Ohio forward, so encourage you to do that. Relative to the Planning and Zoning Commission, they've had a really full docket as of late, and I trust that you read the meeting minutes from there as well. They are navigating some difficult things, and they're doing a great job. You know, they're working overtime, particularly relative to Mount Carmel and some other things that you probably have read in our own meeting minutes and in the community at large, so just appreciate the work that they're doing.
Thank you. Council Roundtable?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay.
I would just like to thank the Greater Dublin Realty Association. They came and visited on the 12th and had a great group and a good discussion, and it's exciting to hear their outlook on the real estate market in the city of Dublin and the work that they're doing.
Amy?
Nothing this evening.
Andy?
I'd like to thank Ben Pachter, the Executive Director of JASCO, for organizing and popping the cork on our first festival in Riverside Crossing Park. It was a huge success, the Oban Festival. So first festival at Riverside Crossing Park. I think since then, it's been a cascade of activity. I've seen a number of other groups having events there. It's a shame that not everybody could have been there to see some of the rich Japanese culture and customs. It's great, not only for the kids in the city of Dublin to be exposed to that kind of thing, but really adults and anyone from the region. I trust there were folks from all over central Ohio that attended that event, and again, it's just, you know, I want a performing arts center. It's one of those things that, I got to insert that like in every meeting, but it's, it just helps make all of us more rounded people. We do all this business, and that's the softer side. So I appreciate Ben putting that together for us.
Again, on your comment, Mayor, the Hero Hut was a great success in locating veterans in our area, and we are making every effort to locate them. We are concerned about the mental health of some of them because of the high suicide rate, so it was interesting to see all the veterans that showed up and signed up, so now we can find them and start bringing them out into events. Thank you.
I will just add one thing. I wanted to say thank you for staff for administering the speed management public meeting program, public meeting on August 9th. There were people online, et cetera, to share their thoughts. So many things are underway here, our master plan for our parks, our CFPs, et cetera, and to look again at our speed management policies and programs. I appreciate that. I know there is an open survey, so if folks have not had a chance to take that and share their thoughts, it would be great to do that, and then that project will go to CSAC, and then those recommendations will find their way to council. So again, thanks for staff for working on that and finding innovative ways... So, again, thanks for staff for working on that and finding innovative ways to manage traffic as we grow. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll just give a short report on Ohio Mayors Alliance. It is an alliance that has the 30 largest cities in Ohio represented. There was a meeting this past Thursday, a Zoom meeting, just for information, especially for staff. OMA has developed an OMA Grants Navigator Assistance Program. It's a one-on-one advice and assistance in accessing federal grants that are available, and I can forward the information on how to reach Sarah at OMA. There's also, up until August 31st, it's open in the fall, for the Grant Application Boot Camp for cities with populations less than 150,000. It's eight modules, and it helps the cities understand how to and gives them aid in applying for numerous federal monies. Also, at the state level, there's a Violence Prevention Grant that Governor Dewine has added $42 million to, and the deadline is September 8th for body camera grants, and you probably know about that, chief. You can use it for other things. COMA, which is the Central Ohio Mayors and Managers Association, Dublin will be hosting the Central Ohio Mayors and Managing Meeting here in Dublin on September 9th. And then also, I just wanted to also mention Jasko's, the festival, the Oban Festival. Council General Shindo and his wife attended that, and I learned quite a bit about some of the cultures, also learned how to dance the Bondori dance. That was interesting.
Were you that experienced?
No, not really. I didn't do a very good job that evening either, I have to admit. But the interesting thing about that dance, and Council General Shindo explained this to me, is that the dance and the festival is a time that they respect their ancestors, and as they do the dance, they are sending their ancestors, their spirits, back and to, you know, understanding that they had a chance to respect them and to think about them and to enjoy that time with them. Last Friday evening, I attended the Afghanistan Independence Day Celebration at Riverside Crossing Park, which followed the Indian and Pakistani Independence Day festivals that occurred earlier, and what I found and what I'm seeing at Riverside Crossing Park and at the Link Bridge is this wonderful opportunity for diverse cultures to feel as if they own a part of the city for a few moments with their cultures and traditions and sharing that with the community in a very joyous way. And so it's been an interesting thing to watch these different diverse cultures come and feel very free and very comfortable and very welcome at Riverside Crossing Park and at the Link to share those, so it was a very good feeling, so I just wanted to let you all know that that occurred. So if there are no other conversations or comments, this meeting is adjourned.